As a point of, to get something out of the way, if you look at the consent agenda under F, items one through eight, is there anything that we would like to pull off at this point in time or leave it as a consent agenda and make a motion to carry that over to the August 17th as is?
I'll make a motion, carry it over as is.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have, on page six, is the budget amendment as it relates to connect ed and the ADM allocations per school for the school systems, the amount of about $257,000. Has anything changed from the school system that I know of, I mean, that has changed since the last meeting as to whether or not we need to continue to look at this as a specific item or?
Mr. Chairman, there is an attachment, if you'll scroll down, it's a very colorful page, there you go. And that's what the school board actually adopted, and you'll note in the pink column that the school board has appropriated money from the allocation the county provided for capital outlay for both of those items that were being considered.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed as it relates to this? Commissioner Poole, have you had a chance to look at this?
No, I didn't have a chance to, sorry. I didn't have good access over the weekend. I didn't see that on there. That's fine, on those two items, I know that they've still asked if we can help any way with technology, so I don't think there's anybody here with them, so if we can...
Lynn Wiki's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You don't know anything about technology?
Not on those particular issues.
Right. So I would just, I think we can, if you want to take it off for the next meeting, but whenever you have another meeting with them, if you can get some information from them, I don't know what that means, I just know that they've, they mentioned something about technology-
We have a-
-in their response.
I think there's a meeting scheduled in September, if memory serves me correctly, so I'll make certain that gets brought up and get back with you in regards to that. Also, there's another item today that we're going to be talking about that will, depending on the action that our board takes, will address some of the technology issues that they have to the tune of about $175,000 or roughly-
Hundred and forty-eight.
Hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, that's fine. Like I said, I only heard snippets, but I didn't have any details.
Next is on page 13. This is the EDC grant request for the Old Creamery redevelopment project. This was tabled at our last meeting, and some of the things that I brought up, Mrs. Wilson, if you'd like to come forward and talk anymore about it right now, but this is something that I think that we need to take a close look at and figure out how best we can address these issues as we go forward. I think it's a very good project, and I think it's something that the county should be considering, and I'm just concerned that under the current format that we have, or the policies that we currently have, that it really does not address this need that we're trying to accomplish, so that what I think that we need to do is, I'm not certain that today, obviously, since we don't have a full set of commissioners, Commissioner Minant is out with a family matter, and Commissioner Carruth is en route from Raleigh, that we have a good opportunity to fully discuss this issue, but I do think that we need to discuss it about what sort of parameters we're looking at in regards to inner-city development, redevelopment, how to fix up blighted areas and make them more productive than obviously what they are at this point in time. And the Morrisons have done a fantastic job so far, and I think that it's not going to do anything but be a positive to that area, and it's going to certainly be an anchor to develop the area even more. I liken it to the Eastfield, no, Eastland Mall area in Charlotte where it's just gone downhill, downhill, and downhill, and it's become crime-ridden, and we certainly don't want that in our community if we can have some very thoughtful and wise investors that are willing to renovate projects. So that I think that what we need to do is, we need to devote, you know, a good hour and a half, two hours at least, to be able to flesh out some of the ideas and concerns or what we're trying to address instead of just doing it kind of haphazardly.
Mr. Chairman, when the board adopted the current policy, it was one that I had tried to, it was modified from the previous policy, and I tried to make it as flexible as it could be, and in doing so, it's sort of a framework, but there's a lot of gaps, and so if the board, I mean, there's, I guess there's two ways you can proceed, one is to keep it very flexible and kind of vague, then you can do whatever you want, or if you'd like to try and target particular things, you can do most anything you want to, I mean, you could establish preferences for redevelopment in areas, certain geographic areas that you've identified as needful of investment, you could attack, attract, or have it aimed at specific types of industries, you could even have a point system, I mean, there's any number of ways it could be done, but in order to do that, there does need to be some discussion about what sorts of things it is that you want to have attracted or aim this at, so it would require, I think, some thought and discussion.
Is there any thoughts, Commissioner Privet or Commissioner Poole?
Well, I mean, it almost sounds like two issues that are going along together, one is if there's to be a change in the policy, the general policy, and the other is that we have a request in front of us, so can you tell me, restate what your proposal would be?
What I would like to do, or what I think we need to do, is in my, in looking back over the policy that we currently have, I'm not satisfied that this would fit within that policy, number one. Number two is I do think that, it's my opinion, and from knowing the goals that we've set in years past, of trying to grow from within, how to encourage growth within, if those two are in conflict or not coming together, how do we get them to be more working together in a common goal? And that's what I think is that we need to have a better understanding about what our thoughts are as to regards to growing from within, regards to the business community, is if there are older existing buildings that can be renovated, what are we willing to look at doing, understanding that it may not be a manufacturing facility anymore, but it may be a different business sector, may draw different types of employment, and what sort of jobs, and that's what I'm looking at. And in looking at our current policy, that I'm not satisfied that it would address it, and that's why I think that, I would like for us to discuss it and come up with a little bit more finite understanding as relates to redevelopment issues, blighted areas, we do have, you know, there are some older buildings that, instead of building a brand-new building, how do we encourage going into the older to retain the heritage of that area? And I think that to do it justice, we need to spend some time batting it around and chewing on it, number one. Number two is unless this project needs to get an answer from us today on August the 17th, I would ask that we have that discussion before we make this vote. Otherwise, if they need a decision, then we can certainly set it on for the 17th, and after that, move forward in whatever direction this board thinks is appropriate.
And that's, I agree completely, I don't know if they need a decision, I don't know who can tell us if they need a decision.
We do have a company representative here, I'll defer that question to Mr. Morrison, if he'd like to answer. Obviously, as the EDC, we'd be glad to work with the county in fleshing out a new grant, or if it's something that needs to be approved today, we'll be glad, obviously, to do what we can to make that happen.
Mr. Morrison, we're just trying to figure out if you need an answer today or the-
We can wait, we would like to, we, of course, would like everything to be in our favor, we think we have the right ideas about it, and we think it will be in our favor, and if it takes you all a little bit of time to hash it out to understand where we're coming from, I think that'll be, we'll just have to wait.
I would like to be able to get a decision made, and if we're going to change anything about our policy, done within the next 30 to 45 days, so-
That would just be fine, we would appreciate it, and we sure appreciate any consideration you can give us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to delay it, that's why, that's what I was trying to get a hold of, I mean, I wouldn't delay it any more than we needed to, so would we put this on the, to discuss, ask, what do we do, ask staff to come back with some recommendations?
There's a couple of things that we can do-
How do we do that?
And I think it would be more prudent if we can, if we can meet for about an hour and a half, two hours sometime in the next, we can't do in the next two weeks, I'll be out, but, you know, in three weeks, if we did that, then it would give direction to the staff as to what we're trying to look for, and hopefully have something by September. Is that reasonable?
It depends on what the board's looking for, and really, I mean, in fact, I was just looking over it now, I mean, I think it's so flexible, you could do anything you want to, the underlying policies that are there provide the flexibility to do most anything. It's, it seems to me what the chairman may be looking for, maybe others as well, is actually how to kind of tighten up and focus that instead of leaving it so very broad.
That's fine, I guess we can wait on these two to check schedules.
Well, what we can do is if you can look at your calendars for the, when does school get back started, or-
By the time you get back.
Like, the week of the 17th?
That would be when school starts, for me.
Because I thought the school started the 25th.
Yeah, from, the teachers come back a week earlier. My first day is the 19th, at 8:00 a.m., so that doesn't mean I can do in the evening or early, you know, I don't know exactly what time we'd get done, 3:30, 4 o'clock, I can still meet on-
Okay.
Wednesday the 19th or Thursday the 20th.
How about if we did it Wednesday the 19th at, say, 3:30? Commissioner Privet, how's your schedule of the 30?
Be fine.
Okay. If you, Mrs. Honeycutt, if you don't mind sending out a note to Commissioner Minant and Commissioner Carruth about that meeting, and what we'll do is plan to meet from 3:30 to 5:00, 5:30, to flesh out some of these issues, or at least, it may not be anything that we change the policy, but get a just better understanding about what we're trying to accomplish as it relates to inner-city growth is what I would be looking at. With that in mind, is, I would assume that we can, there's no reason why we can't put it on for the July, September the 21st, that would be our regular session in September, is that correct, Mrs. Honeycutt?
The regular meeting is on the 21st.
The 21st, we can go ahead and set it for September the 21st for a decision.
Sounds good.
Do we have a motion to set this request for September 21st, 2009, in our regular session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, motion carries. Next matter we have is on page 30, is the appeal of request for extension of Rocky Glen preliminary plat approval, that's on page 30. The last meeting that we had, there was, this is being tabled for Mr. Scrivener to try and get Midland to talk to him and get something worked out, I believe, is that correct?
That's correct, and Mr. Scrivener is here, so I'll just let him fill you in on the discussions that he's had, he doesn't have anything new at this time, but thinks that he may be able to have something for the August 17th meeting.
Okay.
We have drawn it two more times, and hopefully they'll accept the one we currently have on the table, it substantially reduces what their obligations would be, so I'm just, I had hoped they would get back to me today, but they did not.
Do you think that we'll be getting back with you before the 17th?
They should be, yes.
When you, whenever you get what information you have, I'm assuming you'll turn that over to Mrs. Morrison so that she can forward it to us and get that supplemental to us?
Right, I have my engineer ready to go with the CAD file so we can get a real drawing that we put on the board and everything once we get that settled.
Okay.
So I can at least show you what we're working on.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Scrivener? We have a motion to place this under old bit, well, excuse me, this as well as E4, I think they go together, is that correct?
Yes.
Motion to place these under old business for the August 17th meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Under E5 is the discussion of the courthouse project, page 82. Mrs. Dubois.
At your work session, I believe, last month, Mosley Architects came in and did a presentation for the Board of Commissioners, and they had provided information for three separate options. One was to renovate some space in the facility that we currently have for the courthouse, relocating some of the employees to the fifth floor of the Sheriff's Administration Building, and also renovating the lobby area in front of the courthouse, and that was approximately $2.7 million. The second option was to expand the courthouse, and that would entail destruction of the current jail and sheriff's department, and putting a shelled building on that facility for 225,000 square feet at a cost of approximately $43,008. The third option was to totally replace the courthouse facility, and that would entail demolishing the current jail facility and sheriff's department, and building the new facility for 225,000 square feet plus a parking deck underneath the facility at approximately $51.6 million. Those three options are presented in the agenda packet in detail, showing some of the things that would be involved as far as the renovation was concerned, furniture fixtures, et cetera. We have looked at the possibility of incorporating the facilities into the 15-year plan and incorporating that in, we're looking at fiscal year 2016 would be an option, and in order to do the expansion and taking the price tag of that facility and increasing it by 3% per year, that would equate to a 2.4 cent increase on the property tax rate, that taking into consideration that there are no other revenues expenditures, no account for what revaluation would do for us, the worst-case scenario, I guess, for a better answer for that. If you wanted to totally replace the facility, it would be a tax rate equivalent of 2.83 cents on the tax rate for the same period. Also, in our five-year plan, we did notice in the reval year coming up, I think it's 2013, that there is approximately $60 million that could be borrowed for some kind of future facility, whether it be schools or courthouses, if you wanted to move that project up. So those were the three options that were presented at the work session, and those are the costs related to it. As far as demolishing the courthouse, excuse me, as far as demolishing the current jail facility and sheriff's department, we have that in our CIP plan, it budgeted at about $1.5 million, and it's already incorporated into that plan, so that would not require us to come up with additional monies on that, but we would have to come up with the remainder of the $1.2 million if you were to choose option number one, because we would not be
The, one of the things that was in here is moving probation parole, and that was being moved over into the law enforcement building?
To the fifth floor of the law enforcement, the sheriff's administration building.
Is there anything in the legislature that is adding more probation officers to our county that you know of? I mean, I didn't see anything in there, I know that there was some discussion about changing their, increasing their powers, but not increasing their numbers, but I didn't know if in the budget, if-
In talking with Scott Stoker, there's not been any, he does not know of any plans that they would add any additional officers.
I think the idea of moving there had to do with freeing up space in the courthouse for other uses, so that would be the idea. Also, there is, I guess, perhaps you mentioned, there is sufficient funding left in the project for the administration building to pay for that outfit.
Right.
Which might be a good thing to do anyway, because at least some portion of it, since that is an empty shell up there, and while everybody's on site, it might be advantageous to do some of that work.
The intention of moving probation was to allow the clerk of court to take over part of the basement space.
For storage.
For storage and/or-
And offices.
And offices.
And offices.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm reluctant to move probation parole over into the law enforcement building unless Sheriff Riley has a lot of input as to the way the fifth floor is going to be modified or going to be outfitted, because I thought it was this board's opinion many years ago when that extra floor was added, that it was going to be for growth of the sheriff's office, if I'm wrong, let me know.
That's exactly right, well, for other offices as well, but what, the way it would be designed would be similar to what we're doing with the new office building, be flex space, cubicles, all soft walls-
Right.
-as many soft walls as possible, that way, when we pull them back and put them back into the new courthouse when it is built, that if it's not something that the sheriff's department can use in its current figuration, that would be easy to modify or relatively inexpensive to do.
And the idea here in these options is just that, to provide options, so this least-expensive option is one that buys time and space to avoid the construction of a new courthouse for a fair amount of time, and certainly, it's not the sort of deliberation you'd probably want to do today with three people here only, but it's a viable option that, you know, I think could easily, at least in my opinion, maybe buy, buy maybe as much as eight years or more. So at some point, and you may want to consult with some of the courthouse officers about it, but it's certainly a viable alternative to new construction.
In regards to the Mosley plan that they presented to us, I believe it was last month, some of the concerns that I have is that they were talking about moving an office and a district attorney's, in the district attorney's, a office member down into the basement, and splitting one person off from a group, it just doesn't make sense to me as to how that, how do you continue to be efficient with one person, three floors, two and a half, two floors away from your main hub? So I think, you know, if there's a way that, if we're going to move forward with this, the $2 million plan, that it needs to be, how do we keep offices together, and, you know, what do we do in that regards? So I, I mean, those are some things that I was thinking about, and I certainly think that, my opinion is that option one is the best option to do at this point in time, it's certainly not option two, and not option three, if we were in different times, and I think the need was greater, option three is the best option to do, instead of just putting a Band-Aid on a, on a serious cut with option number two, that's not going to do anything. But I do agree with Mr. Day's opinion, is that in doing some of this modifications, it will grant, extend the life of the building quite a bit longer. But I would like for Commissioner Minant and Carruth to be here so that they are able to inquire and have more discussion about this. Is there any further comments or any discussion by Commissioner Poole or Commissioner Privet?
I just, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, we ought to have them here.
Okay, well, why don't we, we should still be able to have everything by September 7th, is my date, I think is our work session.
It's the 8th.
It's the 8th, that's right. So we have a motion to place this on September 8th work session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We've done the consent agenda under G1, is the award contract for E911 routing service to Entro, Entrado Inc., page 128. Captain Patterson.
He's the director of the 911 center also. The sheriff's office is requesting a change in our routing service, we currently are using AT&amp;T, we wish to go to Entrado. It's newer technology, and it's kind of unique in this case, it's actually cheaper than what we're currently paying. Entrado is a company that we've known, they're actually the database holder of the 911 addressing, AT&amp;T actually pays for that service from them, so they're actually holding our addressing already in redundant databases. They're now, have the capabilities of providing 911 dial tone for us, and NG911 stands for next generation. This system is totally expandable, not that we'd want to expand it to the, immediately to the new technology, it's the capabilities are very robust, if we wanted to in somewhere down in the future to actually have a 911 caller on a cell phone, take a picture, and send us a picture of a traffic accident, this system would be capable of doing that. It also would be capable of both sending radio, telephone, and 911 calls to a single point. This will help us with backup systems, where Lieutenant Gilliland has applied for a grant through the state to pay for a major part of the upfront cost of this infrastructure, we're not sure if that grant's going to come to fruition yet or not, but it's a joint venture between Stanley, Union, and Cabarrus, and that will give us a more viable system. If for some reason we have to vacate our 911 center, we can actually move it to either Stanley or Union County, giving us a little bit larger distance, and, you know, we had some type of incident happen downtown, gas leak or something like that, where we have to evacuate, we may not have the advantages of moving somewhere in Concord. We also do have a backup center in Kannapolis which is available to us, but this gives us just more backup for backups.
When you say it's expandable, is that, is that being able to, what you were talking about, picture the-
Pictures, I mean, it's just, it's basically going into that IT cloud that we're so used to with our internet, with everything else we use, it's IP-based system, we actually have a representative from Entrado here today, if you need, for him to further elaborate on the networking of that system, the networking cloud, we have a representative here that's available to answer questions also.
Is, I saw that Mr. Shanley was submitted also with you, Captain Patterson, in regards to this?
Yeah.
Has the county's IT department been working?
Yeah, they're very pleased with the way the system's designed.
Okay.
It's something they can understand, because it's, the current technology we're using is about 20 to 25 years old, this is more in line to computer systems that we know currently.
Okay.
We've had several meetings, we've actually had demos with the other two city participants, Kannapolis and Concord, everybody seems quite pleased with the way the system is designed.
Will this affect communication with Concord, Kannapolis?
No, it actually gives us a greater backup system, gives us more functionality on the equipment we currently have, too. The biggest thing, if we had to drop a center and move somewhere, that's a problem for us, depending on what type of emergency it is, so this actually gives us a better backup system to provide continuous 911 coverage for all our citizens. So it's got a lot of major features in it, and it's cheaper, and all this comes out of our 911 surcharge.
And I believe that you, in our documents, it says that it should save us between $5,000 and $10,000 a month?
Right, right.
Okay. Is there any other questions? We have a motion to place this on the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is page 157. Mrs. Dubois, this is the finance closeout of the $98 million bond fund projects.
Yeah, so we were reviewing some of the funds that have been opened for an extended period of time, and have gone through and evaluated. period of time, and have gone through and evaluated this fund, and after some approvals that were made by the Board of Commissioners in December of this year, we had a couple of adjustments to some budget line items that we needed to make, which is the first request of this agenda item. The second two requests are after speaking with Cabarrus County Schools and Rowan Community College, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, excuse me. They both had funds that were still available to be used, and Cabarrus County Schools had requested that their $148,961.67 that they had remaining would be designated for technology purchases for schools. That's what their request is for, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College requested that their $280,042.86 be transferred over to a capital reserve fund for future projects. There's also a letter attached to this agenda item from Dr. Spalding with that request, and for your information, for us setting that money aside, every time that they use any county dollars, $1.4 of every state money is matched with that. So, we are requesting that the $148,000 be set aside for technology for Cabarrus County Schools, and the $280,000 be set aside in the capital reserve fund for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And this will allow us to close this fund out. The purchases that'll be made from this fund will be done by September. We'll be able to go ahead and close this fund out.
Any questions? On the second page, down here at the bottom, I don't know if you can see contingency, let me see if I can get it bigger. Contingency to capital reserve and contingency or concon from capital projects.
Contribution to.
Okay, so we are, that is not money that we are, that is the money you're talking about for our CCC?
Correct.
Okay. And the $148,961.67 is being transferred to technology for the entire school system?
The entire school system.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
There will also be an additional technology request next month from another construction fund that we'll go over.
Okay. Any other questions?
Make a motion, put it on the agenda.
You want to put it on the consent agenda?
Second a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Under G3, the discussion related to the project, applications for potential of debt issuance to the CUSAB, that's on page 162.
Did you say 152?
162.
Oh.
Ms. Dubois, this is just a follow-up of our meeting from last week.
Yes, and attached to this are the applications that Cabarrus County Schools approved last Thursday evening, and Kannapolis City Schools that they approved the previous Monday. Cabarrus is listed under the supplemental information, and then Kannapolis is listed under Kannapolis application.
And the Kannapolis application is the renovation of?
It's to complete the roof at the intermediate school.
Okay.
And there was another little piece to it.
And the?
And there are two options for Cabarrus County Schools. The first option is for the construction of a new elementary school, and the second option has three phases to it, which is Boger Elementary School, Kitchen Range Hoods, and something at Northwest Middle School. Replacement of the water source system.
Okay.
And Lynn Wickie is here, if you have any questions about Cabarrus County's request.
Any questions for Lynn at this point in time? This is, this does not require any funding from the county. This does not require any funding from the county.
Just the debt service to pay it back.
What I'm saying is that because we approve this, doesn't mean we are becoming indebted on anything. This is just an application.
This is just an application. You'd actually have to go through the debt process to commit yourselves.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Dubois? We have a motion to place this on the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is page 212 is the school construction fund and 2009 construction fund contingency request for Cox Mill High School, Carleay Fur Elementary, and the bus maintenance facility. Mr. Wickie, or will you be discussing that with us?
Good afternoon. With regard to these requests, what we've seen in the development of the projects over time is a significant difficulty dealing with, in effect, either poor quality materials that had to be removed from the site and replaced, or additional rock removal that required additional site engineering analysis. And so, in the process of doing these three projects, CESI was the consultant selected by the county for this purpose, and we've started out, of course, with their proposal to do the work, and as the projects have progressed, we've found significant more unsuitable soils and rock conditions that were hidden, of course, from site, that had to be addressed in the process. And in addition to the discovery of that, along comes with that the responsibility of the county and our engineer to establish what the condition is, how to address the condition, and then to supervise either the removal or the replacement of materials as it takes place. And so, that's really what's occurred over the course of these three projects, and we're asking for the additional funds expended by the consultants to accomplish that work.
How much farther, how much longer is it going to be before the bus garage opens up?
A matter of, really, a couple of weeks. We, in fact, we've moved furniture in. We hope that by the next week, we should start to see some occupancy of the office areas, followed by occupancy of the work areas.
What needs to be done by CESI out at the bus garage if they're about to open it up? If you're getting a CO, what do you need more material work done?
Well, in that case, no, I said, this is work that has taken place.
That hasn't been paid for, or?
That's correct.
It was not already budgeted, or?
That's correct, yes. And it involved both, as I say, both rock removal and unsuitable soils.
In regards to fur, is this under the original construction of fur, or the addition to fur?
The addition.
Okay. Any other questions? Have a motion to place this under consent agenda or new business?
Under new business, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. If there's any other questions, Mr. Wickie, I'm, we'll try and get you those prior to our meeting on the 17th, but I would ask you to be there on the 17th as well.
Okay.
Thank you. The next is page 228 is the economic development grant request for 390 Business Boulevard LLC, and in need for a public hearing. Mr. McDaniels.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This project is, it's a speculative building being considered for construction by a group called 390 Business Boulevard LLC. That LLC was formed for the construction of this building. So, it's an unfamiliar name, but very familiar players. The Nolan Group, the owners and developers of International Business Park, as well as two local companies have formed this LLC for construction of this building. The building itself would be 177,000 square foot with 30-foot ceilings, and would be built at a cost of approximately $7.8 million. Under the development, economic development grant program that you guys adopted in 2008, there is a provision, number four in project categories for speculative buildings and leases. So, it's already included specifically in the grant program, so there wouldn't be any additional modifications to the program to adopt. The project, I've broken down the, what the grant would amount to. Go through my notes here. New taxable, or new income to the county of roughly $49,000 each year, a grant of 85% back to the building owner, and netting the county seven, or roughly $7,400 each year for the first three years. In regards to a leaseback of that building, in the grant program, it states that the building owner can provide a discounted lease rate to a future tenant of that building. So, it's also, the way the structure's set up is, any future tenant of that building would not be considered for a grant. So, basically, the owners of the building are adopting this as their grant, meaning future user would not qualify. This would, in effect, take the place of a grant for an intended. Be glad to answer any questions, and hope you would put it on the agenda for the 17th.
Any questions for Mr. McDaniels?
Make a motion, put it under new business.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And that is for a public hearing. I would assume that's part of your motion, right? Commissioner Privet?
Yes, right.
Thank you. On page 238 is section 530, 5316, Job Access and Review, Reverse Commute Program Grant, or JRC, and that also accompanies the folder that we have at our computers as well. Commissioner Privet and Commissioner Poole, we also have, if you didn't know that. Mr. Bass, Mrs. Kennedy.
Good afternoon. I am so excited to be here before you this afternoon. This is a project that we've been working on now for about two and a half years, and I am just happy to bring this before you. This is a grant that we have requested from the state that will help in areas where we may have individuals in the community who need to get to employment, but do not have adequate transportation. And we were able to demonstrate that we had a need in the eastern part of Cabarrus County, and around the areas of Midland, Mount Pleasant, and Harrisburg area, and identified areas as Concord Mills and the city of Concord itself as employment centers. We submitted this application, and we received notification on June 16th that we had been approved for the funds of $121,835 for the 5316 Job Access Reverse Commute Program, which does require 50% match of 121,835 for a total of 243,670. This project is time-sensitive in the fact that we only have 30 days to respond back to the state in reference to the material. So, that's why we are asking that you would take action on the resolution that we've provided, along with the, authorizing the county manager to execute the agreement that was provided by the state after review by the county's attorney. So, we would need for you to suspend your rules and take action on this this evening, so we can get this turned around and go back to the state. We're also asking that you approve a fare per trip of $1, which matches the current CK rider service. This program will allow us to interface with their service in Concord, so that an individual can get on public transportation in the eastern part of Cabarrus County, and then travel into Concord and transfer from our service to their service, which would be able to extend their trip out into the community. So, this is something that we've been striving to do, and we're really excited about it.
Any questions for Mr. Bass? Is this providing just the salary of a driver, or does this provide extra buses? What does this money provide?
This money actually is going to provide us with the ability to hire additional staff to man this service. We already have the additional equipment that was given to us by the state in our last 5311 grant request, so we have the vehicles ready to go, and as soon as we get your approval, we will be able to begin the process of putting this in motion.
How did you determine, I'm assuming the routes, the green route?
Yes, sir. We actually have two different routes. One is using Midland as the hub. You have the one route that travels from there to Concord Mills and back through Harrisburg, and then the other direction, it's going to go to Mount Pleasant into Concord and interface with the CK rider service. And then twice during the day, we will be able to provide an express bus service that will be coming directly from Midland into Concord.
So, this is a service that we'll be providing to the Midland residents?
Yes, sir.
And the southern portion of our community?
Right, including Harrisburg and the Mount Pleasant.
What was the reason for 601 being highlighted, or at least to have it highlighted on my map?
That's that express route.
That's the express route.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We have a motion to?
Where the, okay, the matching funds, where do those come from?
We actually were, well, you go ahead and tell them. We worked real close with finance to make this happen.
That is a part of their budget, their appropriate funding, and their auto maintenance, so we're going to reallocate those funds into the proper lines.
And we received money from the stimulus package to replace those funds, so we're not actually having to create any new funding. We're just moving that funding around.
Okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure and take action on this item to meet the grant application deadline?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And we have a motion to adopt the resolution agreement between North Carolina Department of Transportation and Cabarrus County, and authorize county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the county, subject to review by the county attorney.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second a motion.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
There is one more motion.
One more motion. We need you to set the fare for a dollar.
A motion to approve the charge of $1 fare per trip and adopt related budget amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have next is a consent agreement for the Mills at Rocky River subdivision, found on page 280.
This is the information related to a consent agreement for the Mills at Rocky River. If you're familiar with this particular subdivision, it's a very large subdivision that was approved by Concord that's located off of Rocky River, where we also purchased the school site. So, that kind of gets you situated where it is. The project was approved in December of 2005 by the city of Concord. They then revised their plan, and it was approved on October 17th of 2006. If you remember, you have seen two different consent agreements for this project. However, those consent agreements were never executed, so now we have a different applicant back to try to work out the consent agreement. The developer is Rocky River Project, and they would be subject to a single-family lot payment, the $4,034, based on the timing of the approval. They do still have a valid approval for the project with the city of Concord. It is also subject to a voluntary mitigation of payment of $1,331 per multifamily unit, and the single family would be due prior to final plating. The multifamily would be due prior to building permitting. We are also asking that as part of this, a one-time payment be made. There were 17 lots that were permitted through the city of Concord with the predecessor that we did not receive a payment for. So, this would, we would ask that they pay upfront for those particular lots. And then you can see that they do have a proposed build-out schedule, which does contain a large number of units for that schedule. Based on the calculations, we did work with the schools to update the calculations. The project, they are still over capacity. You can see CC Griffiths is at 199%. So, they would be required to pay the voluntary mitigation payment, and they would also be required to provide you with some type of a build-out schedule. you with some type of a build-out schedule. And again, this is a consent agreement, so it's prior to the new APF ordinance. And I believe our attorney has some additional information that he would like to add, and then Mr. Brent Cowan is here on behalf of the development to answer any questions you might have.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to add a couple of extra facts concerning the history of, of this project, there was, the board did approve a consent agreement with the developer, and at the time that we were working out the language for it, it came to the county's attention that the developer was in some financial difficulty, and they were unable to work that out with Wachovia, who was their primary lender, and Wachovia ended up foreclosing on the property. So, consent agreement was never signed. In addition, one of the terms of that agreement was that the developer was to donate a school site of twenty-five acres, and then their adequate public facilities ordinance fees were to be credited against that donation as they developed the property. That never occurred because the property was foreclosed, and the county ended up acquiring that school site directly from Wachovia at the price that essentially was agreed that, that was to be the donation amount. So, the county lost the benefit of the cash flow on, on, on that situation. So, I thought I would bring that to the board's attention. Wachovia, through an LLC, actually owns this site at this point. We've had some discussions with their representatives, and at least for the time being, they apparently have put some money into infrastructure to try to carry forward the development of it, but I think their end goal is to try to, to sell it and get someone else to take it over.
The price that we paid for the school site, was that above the original price, or that was the donated price, or what?
No, it was at the same price, but the, the value of that had been set some months before we actually acquired it last December.
Right.
So, whether it was, the value of it was the same at that point or not is, you know, really couldn't say, but, but no, it was basically sort of modeled on the original deal.
Was the consent agreement, what was the original consent agreement, build-out on the original consent agreement? Is it the same as we have here?
The numbers were actually a little bit higher, and it was for a longer duration. The terms were the same as far as prior to final plating, but the schedule, and I have that information, or if you'd like, I can provide that to you before the seventeenth. They were around two hundred lots, a hundred and fifty, so I believe they've actually recorded about sixty-something lots, and they have permitted about ten residential units in the development. This afternoon, the representatives also sent an email requesting that the board consider moving their payment to building permitting, and I think that Mr. Cowan would like to address that with you all, and then also just kind of let you know the status of the project. And that is not in your memo because the memo was written based on your current policy?
Did the original consent agreement have the multifamily units?
Yes, it did.
Okay. So, everything's the same except the lots being platted and the request that the payment be made at the permitting? Is that what you said? I'm sorry.
That's correct. They would like to request that payment be moved to permitting for the entire project, and, but everything else is the same. Initially, I think they contemplated some townhomes, but we did talk about that, and that was, those units were anticipated to be multifamily. So, it currently reflects what Wachovia or this LLC, it currently reflects what they are moving forward with under the current plan.
And this development would be serviced, at least for the elementary school, Rocky River Elementary and Patriots Elementary as it's understood now? I mean, the school board can make up their mind to do something differently, but right now, they would probably go to both of those schools, correct?
Probably. When we worked with the schools, they anticipated that, you know, Patriots would relieve Rocky River, and then, you know, it's kind of going to depend on where that redistricting shakes out as far as where these children would end up at. They currently would go to Rocky River because that's, you know, what we have on the books.
And also, CC Griffin Middle School is getting relieved by another middle school, Hickory Ridge Middle School, correct?
That's correct.
So, that these numbers, although we don't know, these numbers, the Rocky River Elementary School number and the CC Griffin Middle School number would conceivably be reduced?
Once those schools are built and the students are reassigned, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions for Mrs. Morris? Would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir. My name is Brent Cowan, I'm the civil engineer for the project, have been since day one. We started working on this back in two thousand and five. The, as you know, the, the project went bankrupt, Crosswinds and Grace went bankrupt, and the bank, Wachovia, foreclosed on it, I think in October of oh seven. They immediately, within a month, they were on-site fixing up a lot of neglected erosion control issues. The site was in terrible, terrible shape, and they have, they have gone, gotten out there and done the right thing, and it really looks fantastic compared to what it looked like a year ago. They're also moving forward on completing several phases that have been approved for construction already, the phases that were most complete by the, at the time when all the contractors left the site. Basically, we've been, the last, this summer, we've been doing utility testing and preparing to submit record plats, and that's what kind of prompted, you know, us being here tonight. We realized that there was some consent agreement stuff that needed to be nailed down, and they, they are actively talking with some home builders. So, there, there is activity, there's been an increase in, in buzz in, in getting, getting work done out there, getting some more lots on the ground. The, it was mentioned, Suzie kind of mentioned in our phone call today and here just now that the schedule seemed a bit aggressive. It's something that Wachovia came up with. They do have guys on staff that are and have development history and background, but they are bankers, and they wanted me to ask if, if there's another schedule that is more comfortable to the county, to the school system, you know, we'd like to hear it and, you know, consider it. And secondly, as Suzie also mentioned, you know, request under the, the conditions of today's economy to, you know, to, to move the payment to building permitting instead of final plating, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Are there any questions from Sir Cowan? Any questions for Mrs. Morris? We have a motion to place this under new business.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll have that new business on August seventeenth. Next matter we have is a proposed text amendment to amend Chapter Five and append, and Appendix B of the Cabarrus County zoning ordinance and public hearing, page two ninety-three.
This is a proposed text amendment to try to combine our Appendix B with the current Chapter Five. We have been experiencing some conflicts within our ordinance that have made Appendix B relatively difficult for some folks trying to do developments that the small mom and pop shops that are, are more located in the residential zoning districts. So, this, this amendment attempts to try to address those types of projects, and I believe we're going to continue to work on this, to refine it, to potentially amend it a little bit to include also some standards that would strictly apply to buildings that were in the commercial and office districts to make them a separate class.
Mr. Chairman, the planning board has already approved this, and the public hearing was advertised with the Board of Commissioners meeting later this month, however, Mr. Downs and I were reviewing this and feel like it could be fine-tuned a little, and think that that's an important thing to do. It was a couple of choices. One, we can run an ad saying that there will not be, there will not be a public hearing, or you could have a public hearing and we can bring it back, you could table, table the item and bring it back later, so it would be, I would ask you to table it at the regular meeting if you choose not to cancel the public hearing. If you choose to cancel the public hearing, then the matter could simply be tabled to the, the next work session.
Do you think you, would, would you all be able to fine-tune and get the information together for the September eighth, September twenty-first meeting?
I think so, and honestly, I mean, I would prefer to, to be able to have a public hearing on the final, finalized version of it, so if the board is willing, I would like to just simply run a notice canceling the public hearing and rescheduling it for next month.
Do we have a motion to reschedule this for September eighth?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Along with a motion to cancel the existing public hearing for August seventeenth?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. The next is Water and Sewer Fee Fund Interest Adoption of Project Ordinance and Budget Amendment, page three twenty-four. Mrs. Sifford.
Good afternoon. As you know, we began the process of trying to expend this water and sewer fee fund as part of our legal agreement with Concord. We do have a contract with them, and they will begin hopefully this month on the water lines in the Moss Drive community. During the time with the design and bidding and whatnot, the fund did collect some interest. What we are proposing is that the interest be used for a community development fund for those people who don't fall under any of the other reimbursable programs that we have. Currently, we have quite a list of people who have needs that fall outside any grant program that we have currently. Many of those are DSS clients. They, needs include roofs, heating and air, some plumbing problems. So, what we're proposing is that we use HUD guidelines as far as to have some sort of parameters for the program and have that in a multi-year fund so that we can just spend down as needed, and obviously, the clients would be put into a reimbursable program as a first choice, and this would be a last resort.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Sifford? We have a motion to place this under new business?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, excuse me, consent agenda? How about consent agenda, Commissioner Privet?
Consent, yeah.
We have a motion and second, place the only consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the appointments to the Advisory Committee for the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan Update, page three twenty-nine. Mrs. Morris.
What you have with your item is, I had sent out a revised, some revised information, which I believe Ms. Honeycutt got attached to your current agenda. So, what you should have are three different documents. The first document is simply a list of folks and their interest or affiliation in participating with the land use plan process. You know, it ranges from folks who are active in planning and zoning matters to folks who are builders, property owners, farmers. So, you have that list, and that list also tells you, based on the address, which, where, where those folks live. So, I think you received that by email. Then you have a, a map that has some numbers on it, and that shows you, some of the folks on this list do own multiple properties, so in addition to their interest or in participating or their affiliation with the process, if you're interested in seeing what areas they would represent, that's what the map shows. We would ask that you pick twelve regular members for the committee. We're looking at a sixteen-member total advisory committee, with the last four of those members being the chair and vice chair from the Cabarrus County and Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Commissions. So, we would ask that you appoint twelve members at, at the August meeting.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, the map that Suzie is referring to is on, starts on page three sixty-nine of the agenda packet.
So, that list kind of just walks you through the address on the list, where they're located or the parcel associated with that particular person, and then it further walks you through if they own multiple parcels, but you'll see by the first list that most of the people, they do reside within the study area. This shows you, though, however, the folks who don't reside in the area, where their parcels would be located as well.
Okay. I see.
So, the striped area would represent the ETJ area. The yellow is the city of Concord, the gray represents the town, the town limits, and then you would have where it's just open or white, that would be strictly unincorporated. And if you have any questions as you're going through it, feel free to call me.
Your eyes are a lot better than mine. I've got a gray line on here. Well, we just need to come up with twelve names for the seventeenth, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And these people have been contacted or have shown interest in wanting to serve?
They have not been contacted. Some of them have shown interest, some of them probably don't know yet that they're on the list. So, you all would like for us to contact them, but it is a relatively extensive list. You have about thirty-five names to pick from.
What if we were to come up with the twelve names and then you contact and see if they're interested at that point in time instead of having a preliminary contact?
I think, I think that would be fine. I believe that's what we did with the central area plan.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion to place this on new business.
Second motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next matter we have is the designation of a voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference, which is, I believe, August twenty-seventh through the twenty-thirtieth in Hickory. I know that, I think all of us are going, is that correct, Mrs. Honeycutt?
I don't believe all the commissioners are going.
Okay. Bob cannot, Commissioner Cruth cannot serve as the delegate. Any takers?
Are we putting this, are we deciding this today?
We can, I mean, just think about it. We're going to put it on the seventeenth to do it.
I would not, because I will only be there on Saturday, so I would not.
Well, I think that's when the vote is.
Is the vote on Saturday? Is the vote on Saturday?
The, the form needs to be returned to NCACC on August the seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
He's, he's picking on me, so is the vote on Saturday? Do you know the schedule? Or is the vote on Friday at the general meeting?
I can look quickly.
Now, we can, I don't mind doing it.
I think you'd be perfectly fine to do it, Mr. White.
And we need an alternate also. Do you want to, is Commissioner Minnick going?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Why don't we?
She can be the alternate.
Commissioner Privet, will you be attending?
No, I will be out of state.
And then I would make a motion that you be the voting delegate and Commissioner Minnick be the alternate.
Okay.
Second motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Or we have to suspend the rules?
I'll make it.
We have a motion to suspend.
Suspend the rules.
Is there anything else?
How about suspend rules and?
And?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else you need on this, this matter? Thank you, Mrs. Honeycutt. The next is the MS approval of ambulance piggyback purchase, page three thirty-six. Hi, Mr. Hampton.
I asked that you approve the purchase, this is so we can go ahead and piggyback off a bid that Rockingham County did that ultimately saves us quite a bit of money in not going back through the bidding process. that ultimately saves us quite a bit of money in not going back through the bidding process.
Okay. Where will these be located? Any idea yet? If, where will they be located? Where will the, the vehicles be?
These are replacement vehicles.
Will they be in Kannapolis or at another location?
I'm not sure at this point which stations they'll actually replace. We look at the mileage and then pull the units out of service.
What do we, I remember, I thought that, um, there was one time, maybe the first year I was on the commission, that the bodies were kept, but something was done with the engines to remount.
Right, and we also remount.
Okay, that's what I was...
Now, this is for two new trucks and then we're also doing a remount.
So, the vehicles that were taken out of service could be used as a remount or don't know?
Well, we, what we do is we remount one time.
Okay.
Okay, and so we'll actually take the box off, put a new truck or new chassis underneath it. Saves a little bit of money and we found that, that that's good for about one time.
Okay.
And so, these would be trucks that had already been remounted one time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hampton? Have a motion to place this under consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, we have the appointments and board committees. We have the reports coming up and I believe that does us for the day. Is that correct?
That's what I do. I do the level update on the TIF.
Right. Um, so I think that concludes everything except for, uh, there's been, recently about the Health Alliance and I've asked Mr. Day to give us an update on that and where, where, where we play into all of this.
And there's nothing completely definitive at this point. Uh, it, it sounds as though Kannapolis and its bond attorney and, and writers have been in contact, uh, with BBNT to, uh, do a, a placement with, with the bank. It would work probably very similar to TIF. It would just be sold to, to BBNT, uh, hopefully for better rates than they would get otherwise. Uh, but that remains to, to be seen. Uh, and there really hasn't been much else, uh, up until now. There, there will need, there will be the need, uh, for an agreement between the city of Kannapolis and Cabarrus County. There was a, a draft agreement, um, that was never actually approved, uh, to, um, formulate just how, what the relationship between Kannapolis and Ca, and this county of Cabarrus would be with regard to the TIF. So, there will have to be some sort of new or modified agreement drafted, um, to, to make this process or this transaction work. It, it might, it could or, or doesn't have to address the larger issue of, um, the full TIF funding, uh, if and when that should happen. Uh, if it does, there might be some issues that the board would like to, um, consider that, um, given, uh, the changes that have occurred in the world since the last time around, there, it might be prudent to, to review a few items. Uh, but that all remains, um, to be seen in what's proposed from, from the city of Kannapolis.
Anything else? Any questions? We have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.